Okay, I think we're live, so I'm going to go ahead and open the planning board meeting. Patty, do you want to try doing the roll?
Yeah, I'll say Dawn Span.
President?
Carrie Victor.
Present.
Ronald Disson.
Ron is gonna be absent tonight.
Larry Brand.
Present.
Dan Flag.
Present.
Scott Libby.
Present.
Joshua Spooner.
Present.
Okay, so just, uh, Ron Disson is absent.
Okay, thank you Patty. Alright, so we have the minutes of January 13th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, so it's been seconded. Any discussion? Alright, seeing no discussion, I guess all in favor, you want to raise your hand? And Josh, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, so it's unanimous, thank you. So the first item on the agenda shouldn't take very long, I think Rod can help us here, but it's a site plan extension, Fairview Commons Housing at 25 Hackmatac Road, had asked for a six-month extension on this project, tax map U23 lot 75. So Rod, did you want to say anything there?
Um, sorry. You all should, it was on the website where the materials are, there was a letter of requesting six-month extension, kind of just an administrative procedure here. So I didn't really expect any discussion, they're just looking, they're the Thompson Housing Authority going through the state process to get their approvals, looking for their six-month extension to their local approvals.
Okay, so do we need any discussion or can I entertain a motion?
Well, hearing no discussion, I'd love to make a motion. I'd make a motion that the board finds the request for a six-month extension for the Fairview Commons Housing at 25 Hackmatac Road be allowed under section 175 13E and approve the applicant's request for said extension.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I second that motion.
We have lots of seconds, that's good. Alright, so any discussion? Alright, hearing none, again, everybody raise your hand, Josh, say aye?
Aye.
Or actually you could say aye or nay, but anyway, just. Thank you. Alright, so we are to see on the agenda, site plan, this is a basically a sketch or pre-app. David Gleason has submitted a proposed conversion at 122 Main Street to residential units, tax map R05A lot 1. So David, do you want to talk?
Sure, this is a property that went by Main Street that I've owned since 1989 and have rented it out as office space, excuse me, up until the last couple of years when, like so many other office owners, I got by the COVID bug and have been suffering a number of, so in looking at your ordinances, I noticed that I could potentially convert the second and third floor to residential units. And that's what I'd like to do, and that's why I'm here to go through that process. Okay, thank you.
So the board should have received and had a chance to review the memo from Rod. Did you want to add something, anything there Rod?
Uh, no, this is, well, there's a couple of things that I will add that you probably read in the memo. As it's a developed site, you know, staff review concludes that it really doesn't need a site inventory analysis as laid out in pre-app, it's kind of not applicable to this project, so a waiver request for that could be discussed and motioned tonight. He's here for pre-application anyhow, but what we're talking about here is just that site inventory analysis requirement for what I call greenfield subdivisions. The other piece is really setting him up for the next meeting so that he's prepared to come in, again, developed site. Multi-family, multi-unit triggers a site plan subdivision, so really what we see this for legal purposes, he needs to get a state subdivision permit through the town of Thompson in order to rent or sell units within that structure. Typically, it's a three subdivisions, a three-step process. Given that there's complexities of this review are pretty minimal, this could be a preliminary and final hearing at the next meeting, so the board should discuss if they're willing to go that route as well. And staff will make sure that they're prepped to do that.
Okay, so I guess I will open it up for discussion from the board. Any comments from, any of you on Zoom?
Sure.
I was just gonna tap, let's go ahead, Scott.
Um, well, the first comment, I guess, is kind of building off the staff review comments. The first one talks about the water district comments saying that, you know, obviously 201 was just resurfaced, get the new sidewalks in there, has a three-year pavement cut moratorium. I just, I wondered, given the existing entryway onto this is at Monroe Lane or whatever that entrance is, is there the expectation that you'd be trying to do a curb cut to 201? I wouldn't think so, but I would ask.
Well, that's still, so that was just a heads up really to the applicant to deal with the water district. He has engaged the water district. Does seem like there could be potential to go to Monroe to do the upgrade that may be needed, but that, again, that's something that will come back and be more detailed with the next submission.
Okay, and so, but that is for the water district to do the plumbing, not a curb cut per se. Correct? Like, not a curb cut for an entrance for vehicles?
Correct, there's not going to be a curb cut onto Route 201. And I just heard from him that we need to speak up in this room to get hurt by the owl. Yeah, so again, Scott, that's probably a detail that will come with the final submission.
Yeah, and I think probably that was just my reading it too quickly, and when I read pavement cut, I was jumping to a curb cut, which doesn't, wouldn't really fit in there, safety-wise, I wouldn't think, given all the other changes we've done to try and improve safety at the high school entrance.
Yeah, correct, the vehicle access is on Monroe.
The pavement cut, what they're referring to is the fact that there's the moratorium because the pavement, the paving was just done, so.
Yeah, so a soft cut.
So they can't cut into it for three years. So I guess, David, let me just ask, essentially because they have parking area and everything else in place, is essentially what you're going to do within the existing footprint?
Yes, yep, yeah, it actually lends itself very well to it. Not only does it comply with all of the parking regulations, as a matter of fact, with rental units, there's less.
David, maybe talk up, it can sound.
Okay, can you hear?
Well, talk to that owl, right?
Okay. So this particular building seems to lend itself very well to this kind of conversion for several reasons. Fortunately, we already have more than a sufficient amount of parking places for the, if it remained as office space, but also is more than enough for if it's converted to apartments, and the interior of it lends itself well to it as well. In addressing the issue regarding the water, I just talked with TC Schofield at the water district, and we've had a number of conversations. The water main that comes into the building is insufficient because there is a lot greater demand with apartments than there would be with office space, which makes sense. And so it's going to require a two-inch pipe rather than a three-quarter inch pipe. And there are several options there, one is to go to Monroe Lane, which is probably what we will do, but he also stated that there's a possibility that the, not a possibility, the water main runs on this side, and there's a very good chance that we could still cut into the water without affecting or touching the pavement 201. So those are a couple of options that are there, and.
Can you guys hear everything David's saying? Okay, good.
And finally, I will say that I just got a letter from Stuart K., and he's, did you get that Rod? Well, and there's not an issue with the super district on this at all, so. So yeah, so those kinds of things are happening to fit very well with this conversion, okay?
So Scott, do you have any other questions?
Sure, the next one down the stormwater, you know, given the change in use, are you planning? You know, I don't know what, it mentions, you know, what the current foundation of drainage is. Are you going to be planning to include something in your plans on that, any upgrades to the stormwater? Or are there no actual issues with the stormwater collection and?
Yeah, I'll certainly re-convert, conversing with the public works department. Presently, there is a storm drain in the parking area, which has worked very well and feeds into the main system. So I don't think that the amount of paving is going to change so that the amount of drainage will probably, I don't see where that would change whatsoever, so probably that would be adequate. But we'll certainly talk with public works to make sure that's true.
Alright, and my last question, and I don't know if this more towards Rod or just to bring up. You know, obviously, the addition of the change to a mixed use and the addition of a residential use for this building, are there, you know, additional safety, you know, features that you'll be including in the plan, whether it be, you know, lighting, revising how the parking setup, including maybe some striped areas for, you know, the crosswalk at the entry or other internal circulation for pedestrians within that. I know someone, the, I think the memo mentioned ADA parking spaces and access. But I, and also landscaping, obviously, if there's other changes there too, but I think it's just to bring up that point, I'm not sure what the requirements are, but I would think that there, there wouldn't, there would need to be a few things, safety-wise, to address in the site plan.
Yeah, Scott, that's a good point with the lighting, that wasn't brought up in the memo. But at the minimum, we should understand what the existing lighting on the building and the parking area is today. The new folks can have that discussion whether we believe that that's adequate. And we can review against the standards that we have, so that's something that should be a company of future plan. So David, that will be something you'll want to inventory on-site, all the lighting that exists on-site. Pedestrian flow, good point, there's a new sidewalk in front on Main Street there. Access to that, if it's existing, should just be shown clearly, access in and egress and out of the building. I know that the only architectural change, I believe, was mentioned by David was perhaps some fire escape stairways that will be attached, is something like that, is that correct or?
That's, that's a great question, because I, we haven't gotten to the point, which could be a showstopper, of whether or not the building is going to have to be sprinkled. And of course, that kind of regulation may or may not necessitate exterior, other exterior egresses. So those kinds of things will be addressed when we know what the fire marshal will require and the local town as well.
So I would suggest before coming and getting a permit here, that you travel down that way with the fire marshal extensively before you spend the money on final plans here. The other thing that was perhaps a potential was there's a awning out front that may go to a solid roof or something like that. And again, you may want to think about lighting and then some painting of crosshatching for access, pedestrian clear access.
Yeah, that can be easily done.
Yep.
Okay, so I guess Dan, do you have anything?
No, I don't. Kind of, Scott pretty much covered the comments that I have. I certainly think it's a, it's a good project. Seems to make sense for that type of building. We need more housing, so I support it.
Okay, Carrie?
Sorry, yes, ditto, I was, the ADA piece was one of the things I had in mind, so that got addressed. And we definitely need more housing in Thompson. And I'm very aware, I'm very aware of that new sidewalk, because I have a friend who lives on Forest Drive, and every time I take a right to get back onto the road, I hit that sidewalk.
Oh, you're the one.
Yeah, that would be me.
Remember, this is, this is being live broadcast.
It's recorded too, right, and recorded.
Okay.
I go around now, I go around it now.
Josh?
Uh, yeah, I don't have any further comments, I appreciate the comments that have been made so far. I'm all in favor of taking a position that the site plan review processes have been met and recommend the applicant work with the town planner for a final meeting.
I agree, Larry?
I agree, Scott, and the other discussion hit my points. I agree with Josh that we should just work with town planner and move it forward expeditions.
So I guess Rod, do we need an official vote on waiving the site?
Um, inventory, what, yeah, why don't we do that tonight? And then he can come back with kind of a hat tip to a preliminary and final subdivision approval?
Yeah.
At one meeting?
Right. Alright, so I guess Scott, would you like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, make a motion that the applicant can skip the, I'm trying to find, what is that called again?
Site inventory analysis of.
Here we go.
2.2B or something?
I was trying to find it, and I can't find it.
It's 191.
Yeah, here we go, okay, waive the pre-applications, site inventory analysis requirement as allowed per 191 2.2B.
Okay, do we have a second? I second that, alright, so any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, again, I guess raise your hand, and Josh, I won't tell you what to vote this time.
Well, I think I would say, in addition, should we mention the reason we're waiving it, just for the record? You know, waiving it because the minimal scale and minimal complexity and the characteristics, the fact that it's already been built? You know, make the process unnecessary, that sort of rationale?
That's good, we can, why don't we call that a finding of fact?
Sure, okay.
Okay, so I guess.
amend my motion to that effect.
Okay, our second amendment, alright, sounds good, so I'll go back to all in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Alright, everyone, thank you folks, and David, thank you.
Thank you very much, Phil.
Okay, I'm gonna remain sitting here, but I do need to recuse myself, so Scott, if you could take this one, it's a sketch plan review for the Thompson Lewis and Solar.
Okay, I was wondering if that lane was the one that's had that Dawn Span RE/MAX sign on it for a while?
Yeah, you don't have to say how long.
I just said a while.
For a while. I told you, I think it was about 30 years, yeah.
Alright, so bringing up the, where are we here? The Thompson Lewis and Solar project, tax map R02 lot 84, for a new solar farm and associated infrastructure, this is a preliminary, right?
This is sketch.
A site plan, yeah. Rod, do you have something to go with this, or is the?
The applicant is here.
The applicant is there.
I'll share the screen and do my best to assist in stepping through this. So I'm gonna turn it over to Cara Moody from StanTech.
Hi all, Cara from StanTech, I think most of you know me by now, representing the applicant, Hudson Lewis and Solar, who is managed by Norwich Solar Technologies, and I have Martha here from Norwich. So I'll just turn it over to her for a quick Norwich intro, and then I'll just do a quick run through the proposed project.
Thank you, my name is Martha Stasis, I'm chief development officer for Norwich Technologies. We are developing, we develop, install and operate solar projects from Vermont, Hampshire and Maine. We have about eight megawatts worth of solar that we're developing, eight plus megawatts in Maine right now. And we're happy to be working with StanTech. I actually, I used, I used to be in the wind industry and have a long relationship with the StanTech folks, so we're very pleased to be able to be working with them.
So I'll do a quick overview of the project and the project area. Also wanted to run through the memo we got from Rod and address those comments as well. So this is a fixed tilt solar project located off of Route 196 in the rural commercial use district. It's going to be about 1.9 megawatts AC, total fenced area of about 10 acres and a total project area of right around 15 acres. So I know you guys are all pretty familiar with solar projects at this point. So it'll be the usual panels mounted on fixed racking, supported by posts or ground screws. Your electrical collector lines, so there's an underground line proposed within the array. And then it goes to overhead along the access drive out to the interconnection point on Lewis and Road. The, there is an existing driveway entrance off of 196 that the applicant proposes to use for the project. And then after that existing entrance will create a 16-foot wide gravel drive into the array itself. Um, portions of this project area are mapped as the low, medium, medium-rated habitat mitigation area, so we understand what is involved there in terms of the habitat mitigation fee requirement. The product area is pretty much all previously harvested forest land. There are a couple of transmission line corridors running through the parcel, and an ATV trail follows the transmission line corridor that's running north-south through that area. We did a well and delineation out there, I believe it was last year. And so we can see the delineated wetlands, streams, burnout pools that were identified as part of that survey. So as you can see on the site plan that Rod has up, there will be some wetland impact. That's what's shown by that like pink line, line type, so those are the wetland areas that will be impacted. There will be no stream impacts, and we, I'll get to the memo that talks about the stream buffer in a second, but so due to the wetland impacts, we will require a NRP permit from the main DEP. Other permitting requirements will include a stormwater permit by rule. As currently proposed, we're around 0.27 acres of the previous, so well under the threshold for a permit by rule. And we'll also need to get a solar decommissioning permit from the DEP as well. So I guess that's kind of the basics of the project, and just to run through these comments we got from Rod. Understand the entrance should be reviewed by public works. And then the project area, like I said, is just shy of 15 acres, 14.75 as proposed now. And then there was a comment about whether a new lot was being created, whether lots were being combined, and just kind of more information on the land there. So there is no, there are no new lots being created. The lot 84, so that's the, where the array is, that was part of a larger parcel that was divided. I don't know exactly when, recently, and so this back part of it is now lot 84B. So I know that on the towns, like online viewer, it doesn't show that yet.
Yeah.
So that might be why there was a little confusion about.
We're probably lapsed about a year on our parcel.
Yeah, so. So that's what's going on there. And then question about improvements to existing utilities on Lewis and Road. Yes, there will be some improvements needed that CMP will do at the applicant's expense. And then they ran through the DEP permits required already. I spoke with the CEO yesterday about the property line setback, so understand what we need to do to make the change. We were showing 80 feet along a side setback instead of 30 feet, so we're gonna adjust that setback to 30. And then the question about the 75, or comment about the 75-foot stream setback, I also talked to the CEO about that. So we are going to pull all project activities outside of that 75-foot stream buffer, so that stream is, yeah, exactly right there, so the orange line is the 75-foot buffer. So we'll just pull the clearing limits and fence outside of that 75-foot buffer, so. That is it for what I have to say, so whatever questions folks have.
Well, thank you. So I'll start with folks in the room. Larry, do you have any questions?
I'm the only one.
I know.
Uh, so are these, are these going to be fixed panels or?
Yes, yeah.
As opposed to the rotating type?
Exactly, yeah.
And you said there's a utility corridor that goes through there, CMP. Any possibility that there's room on that corridor for being able to connect directly to the transmission line?
That line is larger than what, we'll connect, this project is under two megawatts, and we'll connect to a three-phase line.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so the line that's out back is too big.
It's too big, okay.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was kind of wondering.
Yeah.
I think that's about all I have right for the moment, Scott.
Alright, Carrie, how about you?
Just trying to get my head around this and thinking about the other project that's on Lewis and Road. Is, are these very close to each other? And the actual time construction line, would there be overlap? Would there be issues there? Just, just thinking completely off, off the top of my head here. The impact, I guess, on traffic and construction vehicles and.
When, when is that other project proposing to go to construction, or is it under construction now, or I don't know anything about that one?
Map is down. Map is down. Sorry, Carrie, I was looking to bring up our map, it's not up right now. So the other project is within a year, they have a year to execute their site plans. So we anticipate within a year that they'll get started. They still actually have to go through quite a, it, it's a utility scale solar project that's happening behind Cleve Street.
Is that like the 20, 20 something megawatts, 22 megawatts?
Hundred acre, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Two megawatts.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it's in close proximity, so they both will, I mean during construction. You know, that's something Carrie we can bring up with Dennis at our public works to see if he has any issues with that traffic. I still don't think it's a high enough traffic count even during construction to have. Other than seeing traffic control plans for your construction and then you have good turning movements and things like that and site distance. I think the, the distance is maybe half a mile from where Old Lisbon Road cuts into 196. And where this cut, and where this would be coming in to 196, maybe not, maybe not quite half a mile, but.
If it's the project I'm thinking of, I saw it, it's further north or?
Yeah, it's all further north.
Yeah.
But they're supposed to be, well, utilizing the southern end of the old Lisbon Road. That comes off of 196 and then comes back into 196.
Yeah, this is, it's not too far up, 196 from this one. And actually, the, this lot abuts it at the very far corner, the northern corner of your lot. That you're, that is not being fully utilized for this project, you're using the, the southern half of this lot. But that northern corner abuts the southern portion of, of, of that larger project.
The Napa Valley of solar panels.
The other thing that will impact the timing is the interconnection and availability with CMP. So we're, we're watching that as well.
That's a, that's a great thing to come up just before, well, I was gonna go to Dan, but I'm gonna take over and ask my question. Cause I have the chair. You know, we obviously have had a few solar projects come to us. We have that 22 and a half megawatt project just the north of this one. We have three other projects that have been approved that are between two and five, you know, comparable size. You know, I know the larger project is tapping directly into CMP's line back there. The others like yours are utilizing existing infrastructure to the poles. But all of those projects, I think, are, are battling for that space from CMP. And I'm wondering, you know, I asked this question a while ago about are we, are we reaching a saturation point of solar power in Thompson? And the, and the hard thing is, it hasn't, none of it's gone in the ground yet. And it certainly is not in the lines. And I've been told that it'll self-regulate in that there's only so much room for power. But you know, with, if, if this were to be approved, that would be four comparably sized projects. What are the limitations on accessibility to CMP for these four projects in your view?
If the limitation is the capacity at the substation, it's pure and simple that, frankly. So as soon as the substation is full, then you're not gonna see more applications. Because it's cost prohibitive to increase those capacity at the substation.
And do we have an idea of what that capacity is? That's the real question.
Off the top of my head, I don't have that with me, but we can certainly get it for you. It's publicly available on CMP site.
I mean, the, the question then becomes, would they be here in front of us if there wasn't capacity?
Yeah, we wouldn't.
Well, I mean, it depends if you, if you get the approval and get your foot in the door with CMP. Then it's a race to the finish between your projects and the other three, if there's limited capacity, so.
There's a queue position, you, there is a queue position in terms of when they'll even study it. So we are in their queue to be studied. We expect the study to be done in the next year timeframe, which is why we're starting this pre-application process with you folks. We still have to turn around and bring together our full application. So we're doing that, we're also waiting for CMP's bumper study to move forward.
All right. Okay, Rod, jump in.
Follow me up on your question, if I, if I may. Are we talking about different substations in town? Cause you, you said a substation, I'm thinking there's a substation Thompson-Lisbon line essentially.
Yeah, I don't know where the other three or four projects are that he's referring to, that have been referred to here. So I don't know which substation they're going into. But it, it is based on the location along the line. It's gonna be in our case, beside of the project, the three phase line, we're gonna be looking at. And I would guess, depending upon the, the capacity of the other project, they're gonna be looking for three phase lines or. Well, the 22 megawatts, they're going to a larger one, I'm guessing it's a 34.
Thank you, I'm sorry Scott.
No problem. Carrie, I didn't mean to cut you off, you, you were all set, right? Okay, Dan.
I, I'm fine, I just, you know, I'm not a solar expert by any means, this is brand new to me. But I, you know, we could go around, prove, approve, approve, approve. But then all of a sudden, like you say, when they all come down to finally, you know, breaking ground and, you know, doing the work that needs to get done. Are we gonna run into problems because we may have bit off more than we could chew? That's my only concern and I'm going to defer to the experts, CMP and others that are much more knowledgeable than I am about solar power.
All right, Dan.
All right, I apologize if I missed it in the presentation earlier. But number four talks about in the memo, improvements to existing utilities along Luiston Road. If I recall correctly, I think it's a single phase line in that area down to, I think, turns three phase down towards River Road. Is that, is that correct? You're gonna have to upgrade the, some of the lines on 196 to get to the three phase line?
Yeah, we're gonna do about 4,800 feet, a little bit less than a mile of three phase upgrade to the, upgrade on the single phase to three phase to the north.
Okay.
Which the project will pay for.
Yep, okay, that's all I have, Scott.
All right, and Josh, how about yourself?
So being last in line, I, I think all the really fun questions have already been asked. I really liked the exploration of whether or not the applicant is aware of the capacity limits and where that went. That was really interesting to hear. I assume the applicant has thought about that and my read of it is that the applicant's thought about it, they're aware of the issues, the potential issue. And they're comfortable if the math works out that certainly the ones that have improved so far in this one will be able to be handled by the system, so that's good. So I have no questions.
Thanks, Josh. Next time, I'll make sure to go with you first.
I never would have, I was, I was just complaining about being last in line, but I really don't care, I'm happy to be last in line. And I never would have had such good questions that were raised, so no worries.
All right. Well, do, do, do you guys have more questions from us? You know, as far as any kind of feedback on your project that you might wanna try and get from us at this point? I was glad to see that you're gonna move the, the clearing and the fence to, to accommodate the, the 75 foot buffer for the stream. That made sense. Are there other issues that you see with the, the amount of impacted wetlands? That, I know you mentioned going to DEP for that. Are there issues with that or, or are you comfortable with, with DEP's approval on those?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're pretty comfortable with that. We've been, StanTech has been submitting, you know, lots, lots and lots of applications to our DEP over the last few months for wetland impacts associated with solar projects. And so we, you know, know what the DEP is currently, you know, looking at and requesting in terms of things like compensation and mitigation. And alternatives analyses and, and all that good stuff, so no, no concerns there. And this, this layout that, you know, we presented tonight and in our pre-op package, obviously that's just where we're at now. Things are gonna be tweaked here and there, you know, before we submit our final application to the town. So what you're seeing for impacts, wetland impacts on this plan, you know, might change slightly by the time we come back, but.
I'll add in Scott and board, since we have seen many of these solar projects, we do have kind of a standard that we're getting to understand as far as review and then inspection and follow-up. Mostly triggered by that Middlesex Road, one that did get started. But as you saw from tech comments, when these come in for final review, being very clear about the laydown area, when, when it's under construction. That seemed to take a long time at the last review about identifying exactly how big those laydown yards are. You know, the construction trailers, the parking spaces, all of those items being pretty clear, delineated on the site plan. Even, even if they are proposed to just be revegetated. The other piece would be the third-party inspection when it goes and gets a final site plan approval. That we would expect to have some inspection reports on the development. That will come later, I just wanna give that heads up sooner than later.
You know, along those same lines, Rod, as far as, you know, in the, the last couple, we've, we've been asking more about the, you know, site work. As far as how much grading and other things need to be done. I can't quite tell on, on that map what, if those contours are two foot or five foot contours. And how much, it seems like a little bit of a ridge down the center of it, but it might not only be, you know, a, a 10 foot elevation gain, I'm not sure, but.
Yeah, and we haven't shown, you know, we don't have a grading plan yet that was the final package. But I mean, Martha can jump in, but Norwich, you know, tends to basically try to avoid and limit grading to the extent possible.
Yeah, we're not, as long as it's, you know, it, it can undulate, the array can undulate. So if we don't need to grade, we're not looking to grade. We don't need to do that ground disturbance. The other thing I would point out is that the elevation is roughly, it's not significantly higher than the road. And it's set way back off of the road, so that we're leaving vegetation in between. So they'll be screening along the, from, from 196.
Do you expect, May, Scott, that 196 actually rises up heading towards Lisbon Falls? Do you expect there's gonna be a sight line to the solar array from either 196 or the regolith up in that area? Or do you think the vegetation is pretty well blocking that all the way around?
I think the, the vegetation is pretty much, we did a, just a rough sort of new set to get an idea. And there, there may be, it's, you know, it depends on leap on and leap off and structures in between. But there may be a glimpse in the distance from a small area to the north. But it's very limited.
And that was, it was just the of like the racking really, right? If panels are making stuff, it's really just would be the back side of the panels and be the end of it, yeah.
Cause I assume the panels are all placed up.
Yeah.
Usually a good idea.
All right, any other comments for the applicant? Guess we're all set, good luck and we'll see you in a few months or so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before Dawn, Dawn, did you wanna take a motion for adjourning?
We, we should go ahead and adjourn, but you can run it if you want.
I, I can just say so moved and you can run it.
All right. So anybody opposed to adjourning? If not, we're gonna move on to the workshops. Yep, okay, we are adjourned. We have two workshops this evening. One is housing density and.